I'll move us on to our interviews for city open board seats. The first one we're gonna have is for Reagan Perry for the city band board. Is it Reagan?
Yes.
Okay, come on up Reagan. Welcome, how are you? Go ahead and sit down. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Tell us a little bit about yourself, anything you think we should know and then we're gonna ask you a few questions.
Well, I played in band for six years. I played a French horn and I continue, well, plan on continuing to play throughout college and then hopefully throughout the rest of my life.
We'll start with some questions, Commissioner Graves.
Reagan, why do you want to serve on the city band board?
Well, I feel like the board maybe needs a little younger face and I would like to be able to outreach to the community more and get more younger generations to know about city band. Thank you.
Commissioner.
I'm taking notes. What Reagan has to say. Reagan, tell me about, I appreciate the fact that you told us about what instrument you play and that you played for six years. Tell me about other skills or qualifications that you think that you have that would just be a really big asset to the city band.
I have good communication skills. I like to talk to people. You know, I have had a lot of leadership experience throughout the years. I am currently serving as an ag ambassador on the farm bureau board and that has given me a lot of opportunities.
And so, how long have you played on the city band?
Five years.
Commissioner Clayton.
What role do you see the band board serving for the city of Ottawa?
I think that they serve as like a source of entertainment inside of town so that people can spend their money locally and enjoy what Ottawa has to offer.
Reagan, what do you perceive to be the biggest need or concern regarding the band?
I think that they definitely need more advertisement and more presence in the Ottawa community.
Do you have any other changes or improvements that you would recommend for the band?
Not necessarily.
I was so impressed, I missed last week's meeting, but I was impressed that our mayor remembered to ask my very favorite question.
It's embedded in my head.
He's with, there's so many of these with me, but Reagan, what should we be asking her? What is something that you wish we'd ask you that we would not ask you about your application for this?
Not sure.
Is there anything that you think that the city band needs? I mean, as a member of the city band, is there anything the city band needs?
I don't think so.
Okay, good, that's good, that's really good.
Commissioners, any other questions? Reagan, I certainly appreciate your comment earlier about trying to, you know, make a younger face for the city band. We've been trying to do that with the commission and I think we're succeeding, so we appreciate you. Thank you for applying. I don't think we have any other applications for city band. We'll probably have a discussion this afternoon and if we make a decision, we'll certainly notify you of our decision.
Thank you.
Reagan, thanks for your time.
Thank you Reagan.
That'll move us on to our 410. Emily Hamm with the accessibility advisory board. Settle, yeah, go ahead and take a seat. Hello Emily, how are you?
Doing well.
Good, good. Go ahead and tell us who you are and anything you think we might need to know about you.
I'm Emily Hamm, sister over here, he's recruiting himself, I believe, right? So, I have two kids, active mom life, volunteer with ORC coaching and have softball coming up, so enjoy that and we'll look forward to spending some time outside with some littles soon. Resident of Ottawa, almost all, I was born not in Ottawa, but then moved here when I was a couple of months old for the first 18 years of my life and then left Ottawa for the next 18. Came back and I'm just ready to have combined both the experiences of being a resident as a child and then seeing different opportunities outside of that as an adult to contribute in some way.
Commissioner Graves.
Why would you like to serve on the accessibility advisory board?
I see that sign as I'm driving in on 68 that says, "We are building an inclusive community" and two key words there for me are building and inclusive. And to me, like, building is ongoing, it's a process and you need people to be willing to be part of that. It's not just a few select that can do that, it has to be a lot of us coming together. So, both of those words, I want to be part of the building and I also am pretty passionate about inclusion and want to join that.
Thank you for being here, I will appreciate it. Can you tell me about specific skills or qualifications that you have that you can offer to this board?
Absolutely. My work has employee resource groups and one of those is called ADAPT. And that is essentially disability awareness and that's a huge wide range from neurodiversity to physical disabilities to learning differences. It's wide, but I really enjoy serving on that board through work. Now, we're a global company, so I don't think anyone in Ottawa has the opportunity to grow from that. But I want to take that skills, knowledge, speakers, professional development that I've gained through that board and apply it here locally. I'm also a board member for Hope Unlimited, which is a domestic violence shelter out of Iowa. It doesn't actually serve Franklin County, but it serves four counties to the south of us.
And ADAPT is actually a nationwide organization, I mean, they have all kinds of adapts kind of everywhere.
I don't think we're part of the official like group, but it's called ADAPT and I think they may get some ideas from it, but that'd be cool to be an official member. I think it's just with our employee resources.
How do you see the accessibility advisory board serving the city of Ottawa?
I see it as advocacy for those who may not have a voice. I see individuals in professional contexts who see needs and have the ability to advise. As commissioners, I believe you all have the great responsibility and the privilege of serving everyone, what a huge responsibility. So, you need feedback, you need insight from those who can maybe specialize a little bit in terms of areas of need to provide what I would hope would be creative innovation as well as inclusive suggestions of ways to make it more accessible, our city, our community, our culture for everyone.
Thank you.
What do you perceive to be the biggest need or concern regarding the accessibility in Ottawa?
I think, I've been thinking about that. I was at Forest Park yesterday with my kiddos and I saw the, like, the swing, for example. That's like what I would assume is be set up for someone who maybe has physical disabilities, but I noticed it's like cedar chips to get there. And I'm thinking, yeah, it's a great thing to have that, but could someone in an electric wheelchair access that? Would they require someone else to get there? So, I've been opening my eyes a little more to some of the ways that I'm like, yes, that's awesome that that's there, what else? Like, what's that next step? Also, for me too, just the culture of ableism as the idea that we just assume we're all the same and I think embracing neurodiversity and what individuals that we might have seen as different or strange maybe can provide such creative and innovation to us. So, like, listening to groups that may not have always had a voice, but then hearing maybe how to provide accessibility to them, whether that's physical, neuro. Even on the website too, I was like looking at just accessibility in terms of a technical perspective on how to make the website more accessible for someone who, say, is blind or might need a screen reader. And all of those are components that can be, you don't need a massive overhaul, just maybe little fixes here and there that can really support a wider range of individuals. So, I don't have one good clear answer, but thinking broadly about ways to impact the community.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go off from the last question and Emily, I've had a couple of citizens that have contacted me and we all are really, when you were saying being accessible, social media has really made us really be accessible and things are oftentimes on social media and things are put on there. And I've had individuals who have contacted me concerned that possibly there's been a post that maybe have made on a community board that had your name listed with it. I wonder if you could address that and tell us a little bit about that recently.
Absolutely. I have five at this point winning complaints with the Kansas State Department of Education, one of which involves the revealing of confidential information by the assistant superintendent. And I followed all of the pathways and there's been no traction, there's been no action taken. And it's really discouraging when someone has followed those pathways and is advocating for their child within their legal rights. So, I felt the need to communicate to the community more broadly that parents who are experiencing this are not alone and that we need to channel our forces together for a positive change for students with disabilities.
Emily, I don't have any other questions. Commissioners, do you have anything else you'd like to ask? All right, we'll have a discussion. I don't think there's any other applicants at this point, so we'll have a discussion later on and if we come to an agreement on something, we'll certainly notify you of our decision.
Absolutely.
Emily, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I'll move us on to our 420 appointment with Alicia Howard.
Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. Alicia, tell us a little bit about you and anything you think you might, you might think we need to know.
Okay, my name is Alicia Howard, I've lived in Ottawa for 20 years. I moved here to go to Ottawa University, married a local resident who's lived here his whole life, Jake Howard. I'm currently the general manager at Mac Fasteners in the industrial park. We manufacture aerospace bolts and screws. I have worked at Mac Fasteners for seven years, have been the general manager for a year. I saw this posting, I was intrigued. It's been a while, I stepped out of the community's involvement volunteer role. I was in the United Way for seven years on the board there and my career, my family life kind of took over. So, I am ready to get back into volunteering and being involved in the community again.
Thank you.
Why would you like to serve specifically on the airport advisory board?
I've been working in the aerospace industry for several years. I have never worked in an airport or any kind of governance with an airport, but it's interesting to me. I would like to learn more about it and I'm very detailed and very reliable and dependable, so I feel like I could be a good asset and bring some computer skills and some strengths to that organization.
Commissioner Clayton.
It's kind of along that, what specific skills and qualifications do you think you would bring to the board?
So, right now I manage a $16 million a year budget and I am one of the main players in developing the budget, adhering to the budget, doing all the financial reporting for our corporate division and our corporate offices in Detroit. I manage 50 employees right now, so I have very good people skills and leading teams and helping teams solve problems. And then I am very good at Excel, I have advanced Excel skills, so any kind of data analysis, I'm very good with Excel and formulas and access databases.
Commissioner, how do you see the airport advisory board serving the city of Ottawa?
I read through the master plan for the Ottawa Airport and I feel that the Ottawa Airport can bring people to town, not just small pilots. One of our corporate division presidents actually flew in to the airport here in town for business to come to our facility a few years ago. So, it gives a real opportunity as the city is trying to expand the industrial parks to allow some smaller private jets to come in for corporate leadership to visit the city. Thank you.
What do you perceive to be the biggest need or concern regarding the airport?
I think that there's not a lot of visibility in the community about the airport. I've heard some mention of the airport day where the kids can go out and people from the community can go out, but that's about it. So, I think that some public relations and some more awareness that the airport is there and what it can be utilized for would be good for the airport itself.
Obviously not knowing what all they have and how many V lookups you're gonna have to create with your Excel knowledge.
I'm very good at V lookups.
What changes or improvements would you recommend for the airport?
Before I made any recommendations, I would probably need to do an assessment and see what the current status is and then what improvements or suggestions could be made to make it better. I'm sorry, since I haven't seen any of their documentation, I don't really know.
Can I ask, I guess?
You gotta go.
I'd be remiss not to ask, but on behalf of Commissioner Kayler, is there anything that we did not ask that you think we should have?
No, I don't think so.
Let me say, somebody's gonna ask that.
And then you're gonna have some other questions.
No, we're gonna be like, whoa, you didn't really mean it. Alicia, thank you for your time. We have a commissioner out today, so we're gonna wait till Commissioner Skidmore gets back and have a decision, a discussion then and make a decision. And once we do, we'll certainly let everybody know of how we decided.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, appreciate it. Commissioners, that'll move us on to items to be placed on our regular city commission agenda, which is our minutes from our April 18 study session. Did everybody have a chance to read those and are we okay with moving this on to the agenda? Great. Moves us on to items for presentation and discussion, which is our monthly review of our reports. We'll start with Commissioner Graves.
I actually have no comments, just go around.
Okay, Commissioner Kayler.
I'm making it so easy, I have nothing, not that I don't want individuals to know that, I don't appreciate it, I just have no additional questions or concerns.
All right, Commissioner Clayton.
Yeah, I'm gonna hear that, I am absorbing a lot of information. Since this all came through, so.
You should have had a lot of questions.
I know, I probably, probably will, once I get everything, but yeah, so there's a lot of good information.
I guess I'll be the bad person. I have two questions and they're fairly easy. Where's our chief of police? Adam Howard. Adam, on your report, it says, it states that you, I'm sorry, packet page 35. It states that you had three applicants for the crisis co-responder. I believe you had zero last month. Is this the first three?
It is the first three.
It is the first three, so we're seeing some progress in that. And I believe that you have the two, in that report it showed that you had one interview waiting on two, but those were supposed to happen in April.
We've had all first round interviews with all three applicants and two are on to the next phase and we're working through background investigation and two have.
Great, great, that's great news. I'm glad to hear that you had some good applicants and that's moving forward, so great news, great news. That'll move me on to page 52, which will be Dennis Tharp. I guess we got more good news, we got a response from the Geotech and it came back positive for the solar system.
The Geotech on the solar did come back and it seems like good news always gets followed by not so good news. And so, we're gonna have more conversations about the solar. The Geotech was good, the place that we want to put it is gonna work perfect for what we want to do. But with everything that's been involved with the pandemic and the things that are going on that way, we're seeing the change in the cost of solar panels. And I don't have all the information regarding that yet, but we'll be back and we'll talk more. Like I said, it seems like every time you get moved two steps forward, you gotta take one back before you can get the other three, so we're working on it.
But that was certainly a step that we were waiting on to get an answer on before we could really move forward, so that's good that we got that information.
Absolutely.
Great, great. I don't have any other questions. Do any of the department heads want to speak about anything that's came up that they want to talk about or anything? No? Paul, I do want, do you have anything that you want to talk about with the FCDC? And the only reason I'm calling you out is because you're gonna come up next anyway, so if you want to come up and tell us anything and then we'll stick here.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, happy to give a quick update as much as I can, especially in regards to Proximity Park, we've had a tremendous amount of activity. The mayor and the city manager participated in a site visit that we had last week with the company. That was flying in here and then flying to a couple of other locations in the state of Kansas. We have a virtual site visit on Thursday with another RFP that we submitted two weeks ago. And then had another opportunity to submit another RFP last Thursday. These are all leads, well, two of these are from Commerce and the other one was a visual broker. But a tremendous amount of activity, which is very exciting, good fits, good sized companies, good types of warehouse and also manufacturing. We, I think are really on the radar at this point based on the increase in activity that we're seeing. I can share with you, you may all recall, we had a site visit, seems like it was 20 years ago, but where we had a lot of you out at the airport and the university and the high school were out there and really had a great, great day and a great presentation. We've been, we being myself and Commerce have been trying for months to get a response from them and we just, Commerce was at a conference and was able to talk to one of those folks that were engaged in that and they have enlarged their project and have located at another, another opportunity that they had. We, once they announce officially where they are and what they're doing and who they are, then they told Commerce they'd come back and give us a little more feedback on that. But they also said they're continuing to look at smaller operations, much like they had in mind when they came here and they will keep us on that radar. So, if nothing else, we made a good impression, they just kind of changed their plans, became a bigger operation, I think they felt we can manage, most likely, I'm guessing from a workforce standpoint. But it was at least nice to find some closure on that. Kind of had a pretty good inkling that we weren't getting it, but they just went silent, wouldn't respond to any of our requests and so it was nice to get some information. But this is sales, it's a volume game and we got a lot of volume going on right now, so I'm very excited about that opportunity we got. So, happy to answer any questions on anything related to Proximity Park or elsewhere.
Based on the workforce stuff, how much larger is the workforce is much too large for our community to support? Is that that we have 500 available and they need 5,000?
Yeah.
Or are we, is it, are we close?
We, I feel comfortable with an industry that's anywhere from 100 to 500. You start to get above that, it really becomes hard for us to show the math and show the data that supports that. And, you know, it gets into a lot of the issues we're working on is if you get too big, all of a sudden then you've got some housing issues, you've got childcare, you've got, you know, a lot of issues that come out of that where we're maybe just not equipped to handle something too big. Now, on the flip side, you know, if developers here, we've got 500 jobs coming, I'm sure they're gonna come out of the woodwork and take advantage of the great opportunity here in Ottawa. But I really think our sweet spot, Commissioner Clayton, is between 100 and 300.
Do you know what's that equate to in terms of like American Eagle and Walmart?
They're much larger.
What size they're at?
Yeah, American Eagle is between 700 and 800 and Walmart's, I think, north of 900 at this point. And they've grown to that, they both have grown since they got here. Walmart distribution just recently took on 10 new stores that they're supporting, so of course they added 75 to 100 people in the workforce, which is a pretty big jump. So, they can, and that's, you know, you raise a great point, we can express to companies you can grow to that. So, this is a place that you can grow, just as those two companies have also, you know, we have a lot of manufacturers, Midwest Cabinet, Hasty, Mac Fasteners, that were all locally started by investors and entrepreneurs. And they're here today, years later, and thriving and growing and some of them have been acquired like Mac Fasteners, but, so, you know, we have a lot of strength in sustainability. We get great support from the community, the city, so we have, I have a really good story to tell, so excited about it and I'm really excited about the activity.
Commissioners, any other questions for Paul on this? Paul, you want to move on to an update on the daycare prospect?
Yeah, just want to let you know we continue to work on that. I found out today that providers are starting, you know, we had that meeting and now the providers are gonna start meeting on their own, which I think is fantastic. So, we're starting to build a community there, which I think is phenomenal. And we'll continue and we'll being ECAN and Child Care Ware and the Extension Office and FCDC will continue to support that in a lot of ways. And we've got some things we're working on that hope to get to success and can talk about later. The other big thing, want to invite any of you that can, Wednesday this week, so short notice, but the folks that are looking at building a childcare center here in town are gonna host one of our industry, a couple of our local businesses to, for a tour of their gardener facility. I'll have to get the time to you, Richard, but they're gonna do a kind of a show and tell of what that facility looks like, so you guys could kind of get a sense if you're able and if you can't do it Wednesday, we could certainly work on another time where we could have you all go up and see that facility. So, you can get a sense of what it is they're thinking of building here in Ottawa. And then I think on the 16th of May, at least tentatively, we're scheduled for them to come in and kind of give you a presentation, so of what they're thinking about. So, I think if we could get you up there to see that beforehand, it might fine tune your questions and guide that conversation a little bit. But certainly want to extend that invitation for Wednesday if any of you can make it. But if not, we can go to plan B and happy to do that. So, we continue to move on that, that group's making good progress. I believe May 6th is Childcare Provider Appreciation Day, so you'll be hearing some more about that from some folks in the next couple of weeks. But we continue to, can continue to work on that and appreciate your interest in taking a look and seeing what ways we can partner to help that happen, so appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, Paul? Paul, thank you, we appreciate the update, not only on FCDC, but for the childcare, certainly appreciate what you do for the city of Ottawa and Franklin County.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Paul.
That moves us on to item three, joint resolution creating a working group to consider establishment of the Kansas Association of Trail Towns, along with the cities of Ossawatomie, Harrington and Council Grove, Kansas.
So, several months ago, a group of managers initiated a discussion, actually it was the city major over Ossawatomie, about is there some way we cities along this trail can band together and help each other? We've had conversations with Kansas Wildlife and Parks and we've had conversations with the conservancy. And the power of banding together is that we're speaking with a common voice and as the resolution says, talking about improvements to the state and the state puts money into improvements on the trail. I think you've seen the benefit of that, especially with Prairie Spirit Trail and what the state's put into it. And are the signs for Flint Hills or Prairie Spirit?
The signs are for Flint Hills and mile markers are for Flint Hills.
Right, right. So, we have that coming along and what this simply does is say, hey, let's get together, a little bit more formal, meet a couple a year, meet a couple of times a year and develop a plan, so we can work with the state on a continuing basis. And this even talks about how do we connect with other trails, how does the Flint Hills trails connect? And you may wonder why cities are on here, and that's because cities have been friendly to the Flint Hills trail. But for the most part, it's a city that has done, cities that have done the yeoman's work on the trail over the years. So, what I'm asking you to do is to consider that, if you are so inclined, maybe pass it today, there's a little. There's a little, there is a, I know that's highly unusual. And it probably won't be the first time during this meeting you'll hear that. But there, there is a group meeting up in the rotunda of the Capitol tomorrow. They're going to have a table of the Flint, of the trails and the Flint Hills people. And if it's possible to get that, to get this resolution to them, so they can have it right there on the table. I would appreciate it if you, so are so inclined not to do it. We'll figure out a way to word it so they still get the resolution.
So you're just asking for a decision to whether we accept or not the, the resolution itself?
Yes.
Commissioners, how do you feel about that?
Is there, is there a fiscal note attached to this? Is there any budget item that's going to take?
There is not a fiscal note attached to it.
It's important to know.
Try not to think like the legislature is.
Is there an, an individual that you anticipate or a department that you anticipate that would actually take this on?
I do, I do.
And where, where would you see that?
That person is sitting back behind you on these charges, a department that.
And I'm going to turn around to look at them.
But I would imagine that both Dennis and I will be very involved with this. And we really want our parks people, our park superintendent, who is responsible for this, to get more involved with this also.
Is that what other cities are doing too? Do you happen to know?
Well, yeah, remember, these are smaller cities than we are. And I remember when I was a small city, you wore a lot of hats. So it may be that the manager or the city clerk is actually involved with this.
I'm fine with it, I really have no concerns about it.
So the designate two officials from each jurisdiction, is that Ottawa's a jurisdiction, Council Grove is a jurisdiction?
Yes, yes.
So technically there'll be eight total officials.
But Dennis and I'd be happy to take volunteers from you if y'all want to do this.
I'm pretty sure you guys already volunteered.
I think it said mayor, we did, we didn't have one version, said mayor.
Don't you want this passed?
Yeah, we did, we took that out.
Chris, I don't have any comments as well, I think it's a great thing. I think the trails obviously are a great opportunity for Ottawa, for some kind of growth and stuff. So I'm excited for, for that side.
I think it makes sense that we work smarter together instead of against each other. Certainly don't want to be working against something Council Grove wants to do to their part of the trail or Ossawatomie wants to do to part of their trail when it really benefits everyone.
Well, Commissioner Kayler, you're exactly right. A couple of projects that I can relate to is 59 had a working group on it from the very beginning until when it got built. Years ago, I was over in the central part of the state, Highway 81 had a, a working group to help get that improved. And Highway 69 down the Fort Scott and Pittsburgh, they still have a working group in place because not all that highway has been built out four lane. But, but it started out with cities along the pike, so to speak, banding together and working with state officials and federal officials.
Do you need a motion to approve this resolution?
So I'll move, I'll move that we approve the resolution as listed on our agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that unusual request.
That'll move us on to item four, which is American Rescue Plan Act funding with Melanie Landis. Hello, Ms. Landis, how are you?
Hi, I'm fine, how are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you. So we did have a brief discussion about this in our last regular meeting. This is also a little bit different request coming to you. We wouldn't normally bring to you the request to ask for a motion to, for, to move ahead with a recommendation at a study session. But in this case, we are working up against a reporting deadline. And so we, we wanted to have your support, or at least your discussion about support before that reporting deadline. So the, just as a recap, the city of Ottawa has been allocated just, just over 1.87 million dollars through the American Rescue Plan Act, which we refer to as ARPA. And under the reporting guidelines, we are considered a non entitlement unit. And as a result, our report, our first actual reporting deadline is April 30th this year. So to give you a little bit of background, we, the interim final rule was in place from the beginning of last year. The final rule came out earlier this year. It went into effect on April 1 and our April 30th deadline is, is the first chance that we'll have to report how we're going to use those funds. And we don't have to tell them all of the details yet, but unfortunately we have to select one route or the other in our very initial reporting. And the two paths that we can take are, we can continue on a path of report every single project, every single expense, upload all the detail, do all of those things under the federal reporting, strict federal reporting guidelines. Or we can choose a revenue loss standard allocation, is what they're calling it, revenue loss standard allocation. And it's up to $10 million. And that is the route where we can select that option and then continue down the path that we've already chosen, which is to go through and allocate those dollars towards the projects or programming that we've already discussed. And eventually we'll decide how to do that. So the difference is that, is really that you cannot come back after this initial reporting deadline to select the revenue loss allocation. We could select it now and then decide that we wanted to go to the, to the specific reporting on those projects, but we wouldn't be able to backtrack and come back this direction. It really doesn't hurt us to go that path. It actually helps us. The Office of Recovery and the League of Municipalities are both recommending it. As far as I know, they, according to them, they don't know of anyone who's not selecting it at this point just because it does give us a little bit easier reporting under the federal requirements. But also it gives you a little bit more flexibility in how you can use those funds. So that they can be used for any general government services, like any other, you know, like you would be able to use any other funds for. It does give you, say, and an example might be that you could use it instead for street projects. Where street projects weren't initially called out in their original specifications for things that it could be used for. So we could go back and use those dollars for a project later if we decided that that's how you wanted to use the remaining allocation that we have. That is just really the whole request in a nutshell. We wanted to get it in front of you to say, hey, this is our recommendation. It is the recommendation of the Office of Recovery and the League of Municipalities. And unfortunately, we weren't going to be back in front of you for a regular meeting before the April 30th deadline. So the, the request is actually that you would consider making a motion allowing the selection of the revenue loss standard allocation, or allowance and continue forward with our planned use of the funds as we've previously outlined for you.
And Melanie, I believe there's some other, at least one local governmental unit around us that's already done this?
Yes, Franklin County is using this allocation for their, for their full allocation as well. Do you have questions that I can?
Commissioners, how do you feel about moving forward with the, the request to make a motion allowing the selection of the revenue loss standard allowance?
Do you anticipate going through any of the slides that I, just for somebody who may not be able to, just listening and not able to look at the packet?
I wasn't, I did not prepare a PowerPoint largely because we haven't changed anything we initially talked about. But I could run over, but that list isn't, that would be helpful. We did include two PowerPoints in the packet, one is a rather lengthy PowerPoint, but it was provided by the US Department of Treasury. And it really gives some good background information on just what's happening with ARPA overall. And then a copy of the PowerPoint that we did at our last discussion. Do you want me to spend a few minutes just kind of reviewing that? Would that be helpful for the public?
Sure, that would be great.
Sure. So to briefly, to review, the purpose of using the, the allocation is really four different items that they've identified that we would want to be able to, to support. And that was responding to the public health emergency related to COVID-19, providing government services, providing premium pay or making necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. And in our first several discussions, we talked about the additional opportunity to do subrecipient grants for some of those groups around us that might be allocating dollars towards rent and utility assistance, childcare, economic development, local business recovery, affordable housing, all of those things. We also talked about the challenge there is that each of those areas are also potentially getting dollars themselves. Because that was a large part of money set aside from the state specifically for those areas also, in addition to what was distributed to cities and counties. So we did not spend a lot of time on each one of those areas quite yet, but we did leave some money in our plan so that we can come back and revisit that later. The very first recommendation that we gave to you was to do some utility infrastructure investments, which is a UV disinfection system and a pump station backup power. And then additionally to reimburse the city's general fund for costs related to some COVID-19 regulations where we paid for time off related to quarantine for our employees that equated to about $74,000 and also the fire department relocation study. So those four items were the priority pieces that we brought to you initially to get started. They came to about 777,000. Keep in mind, we have half of our 1.8 million already. The next half doesn't come until July. So everything else has been, is on our maybe phase two list, I guess is how we could frame it. That would be participating in the purchase of the OMA signage board, electronic signage board, pickleball resurfacing, senior agility course, bottle filler stations in our parks. And then some more utility infrastructure with skunk run for stormwater and the purchase of the street sweeper, a new street sweeper. Both of those last two items being something we would have further discussion about before we committed any funds to either of those. We did provide a couple of lists of other items that it could be used for. The lists are fairly extensive, lots of infrastructure, lots of parks types, projects. And that was all in our initial discussion. So we did, out of everything that we put even in front of you, there's about 407,000 left out of that initial list. And also the project cost for anything that was on our initial list could change also. Depends, they could go up or down depending on whether it's something that still remains a priority or the pricing were to come in higher than anticipated. So that's just kind of a, an overview of where we are right now. And, and again, that presentation, that slide is slide six in the packet under the, the commissioner presentation from earlier this year.
So basically, the two options would be, one, you would have to list out every single project in that 1.8 million up to 2 million. And the other option is essentially that we can do with it at our discretion.
Yes, so really it's the same programming, same options. It's just that when we go in to do the reporting in the federal reporting module that we're in, we would, we can go this route and list each, each project and specifically report on every expense, upload every document, have to tie out every single project for everything that we do with the dollars. Or we select a project that says, City of Ottawa Revenue Loss Allowance, and then we list in there what those funds were spent on. But we don't necessarily have to do the, the specific detailed reporting. I think that's the best explanation I can give. It's really not changing how you get to use those funds. It's really making it a little bit simpler for federal reporting, quite frankly.
Yeah, similar to like a tax deduction, instead of doing itemized, it's just easier, take your standard deduction.
Yeah, actually, when I first wrote the memo, I wrote that and I was like, wait, that's, it's allowance, but, but yes.
Okay.
And as the director, if I had said, we're not on the cutting edge of this. In fact, we're probably a little bit behind in getting to the table with this.
Yes.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Landis? How would you like to move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My move that we choose the route of revenue loss standard allowance for the ARPA funds.
Is motion is our second?
I would second.
If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All posting sign, motion is approved.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Landis.
If Dennis will come up here, he can help me with the big visual here.
All right, that'll move us on to.
Bite it up, Dennis, you're biting up.
All righty.
Our item five, which is discussion of additional lakeside lots, sales of those.
All right, so. You're supposed to help.
You guys have practice?
Thank you, all right, so.
This is the dresser hustle right here.
Here, let's just do it. All right, can you see this?
No, we can't see it.
All right, sorry Zach, no, you're fine. All right, so this is, this is actually blown up from your big map there. And as you go in to the street going in, that X means that somebody's built there. This is the original house here and they have these lots. This was built on, this was, this was built on, these are, this is actually somebody whose house you know to you near and dear, but bought these two lots, but a house has been built there. Nothing's been built on these. Dennis and I have talked several times, this is right up against the lake that's there. Dennis thinks this is large enough for a small park there and we could do a walking path around that, okay? I eventually would like to see a walking path come down across this big field and go down here at 15th Street. I think a couple of reasons for that, it's got a little meditation area, have some benches, have some floor there so people can see some natural plants. And then here, these three lots here have all been sold and they have houses on them. And these, I think Paul told me, were recently sold by OU to a local individual. All right.
Are these lots that we're looking at here, I know that they're all, did they actually combine all these? Did they make them all one lot? So it's not, they can't come back, somebody can't come back in here unless they divide the lot again and make it a buildable lot somewhere else? I'm not even sure.
Yeah, I don't know if they ever split.
But it's okay if you don't know, I just didn't know if they.
She bought the one lot at the auction three years ago, just to add to her backyard to kind of, you know, even it off. Now, I don't know, once again, that's a zoning question, if she bought the lot and owns it, I don't know why you couldn't do a lot split eventually.
Was it replatted into a single lot?
That was my question.
Well, it was always platted at a single lot.
Yeah, and I don't think it was changed.
I mean, it hasn't.
So this.
Has it been combined into a single lot?
Yeah, this is not a Russian zine, this is a symbol that sets our intention.
So she bought this, so she lived here, she bought this one. Just to add to kind of her, her yard.
Yeah, this is still a legal lot, so they could develop and sell it and build it.
Now, one, one other thing, these lots here, Dennis and I had a short conversation today. It likely would not hurt if we had somebody that knew about stormwater, just take a look at this and tell us what happens the more we develop here to these people back here.
So, sorry, and then to sort of, sort of kind of run off of that, in order for a development to be planted, they have to do a stormwater study, correct? And that stormwater study would tell any downstream effect that would happen of, of water runoff if houses were built on that 10 or 15 years ago when it's planted. Is that correct?
So if they're replating, it would have to provide a stormwater drainage analysis. If they're using a previous analysis, they'd have to update that.
Okay.
There might, there probably has stormwater analysis done for us, so it might have to.
In the, in the memo that we have included in our packet, it indicates that lot 15 has drainage across the, and you're absolutely right, when you go out there, and we've been out there, it has kind of a big, I mean, there's a huge pipe, right?
Yeah, 14 and 15 do a lot, it runs between. In fact, it's a 30 foot.
Sorry, I know I had asked, does that mean that they're unbuildable? That was my question. So it's not that necessarily 15 is unbuildable or 14 is unbuildable. I didn't realize that it went between the two lots, I thought it went on, I thought it was on 15 only. So that was my question.
If you look at these lines here, it does decrease the building size on both those lots, but you have that, there's a lot of easements around here that.
I think the thing that it says, and I want to be careful of, is that we don't know what happens when this pond fills up. We haven't been there yet, you know? So if this pond fills up and this two cannot handle the overflow from that pond, I would be concerned with these houses, one, and then, two, what does it do to the ditch, to the, to the east? And what does it do to those people in the subdivision to the east? And I don't think we know the answer to that. And so I think kind of what we talked about is that makes about five lots here at this point, if the commission wanted to, makes them sellable, makes them sellable lots. And then we need to do a little more investigation before we sell those four.
The trend too is that, I mean, with park space, is that oftentimes park space is lower lying space, and, and that's not just the City of Ottawa that does that. All cities do that, all municipalities choose to utilize space that may not be buildable, and they utilize that as green space. Is that correct?
It's possible, yes, that's certainly not impossible. There again, you want to be careful with that because if there is an overrun or flooding issue, sometimes this money you spend on your parks, refurbishing them after that event is considerable too.
So our park information also indicates, on the second page of the document that you had given to us, I think it's 131 in the packet, indicates that we really need more parkland. We're not tremendously rich with parkland in the south area of that, in that part of town.
I think that depends on why you want to look at that. We have a number of larger areas, the park space, Kansas Park, the schools that are on the south side of town, we have a number of fairly large areas. I don't know that we have maybe as many of the small neighborhood parks, and just depends on what we want out there at that point in time.
Is there any plan to address with stormwater obviously being an issue, as there's no curb, nothing along that in this, this whole block? I know for a fact, the cul-de-sac, obviously to the south, pools with water currently. And I would see it as a concern to me, as we go forward, obviously, that infrastructure around there, if people are going to be parking along the streets, and that standing water being a potential issue, or is there any thought to looking at that? Obviously, I know when this was developed, it was Easy Street at some point, the developer, there was no curbs put in, anything along those lines, but anything kind of thinking about that?
And we, Zach, we can look at what was done 15 years ago. I personally, I do not know what that stormwater plan looks like and why this was built, the way it was built. I can agree with some of what you're saying there, but I don't know the answer to your question, we'll, we'll take a look at that. And we can look, like I say, that plan is going to have to be reviewed anyway, you know, if we go to sell any more lots out there. And, you know, somebody, I have to believe that somebody thought that that pipe coming out of, out of the pond was, was going to take care of everything, and everything would run into that potential pond. But that isn't exactly what happened.
Yeah, this was a private development. All the city did was approve the plat. They did not build the street to city standards, so it was years before the city accepted it. And it took all the, took all the bad and the good with it.
Yeah.
Well, and one thing that needs to be, the public needs to be reminded is that, yes, that pipe's been fine for X amount of years, but it was, that pond was just drained, and six foot was added, you know, in depth to that pond. So it's going to hold a lot more water and maybe push more eventually, so who knows to what effect that might have.
Yeah, that's what I said, we don't know the effect at this point in time, and so.
And potential homes are rain runoff, or right now it's ground that's absorbing water.
Absorbing some of that, yeah.
I mean, I run my dogs here, so I don't want to build houses because I like, no, but is there a reason, is this an easement, utility easement between those two lots, between three and those OU lots?
It is.
Is there any consideration I saw on the, kind of the sidewalk plan, I'm guessing, on the map, for cutting through those lots out to 17th?
Like, you know, we'll have to go back and look because I don't know what the.
So originally, and I don't know if you can see this, the yellow was actually a walking trail that was, that was, yes, yes. So it actually cuts, it goes back around and then around.
Is that what cuts through?
Yeah, around the pond and then down, so it connects 15th to 17th. That was the original suggestion.
Yeah, and that was an idea that was laid out, so.
And in terms of this, as we sell lots, if this is a park, what would the parking plan be? For terms of, if there's a playground and there's seven vehicles.
Yeah, you would have to, you would have to, this front side, you would have to do something, some concrete or asphalt or whatever, you can probably make three or four parking stalls right there, and.
That's what you got, so yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions? So.
Go ahead, yeah.
So, I keep bringing this up to have this conversation, to sell the lots. So I guess we could have a discussion today about a couple of things. My idea of what kind of park might be put in here is totally different than what you would see at Freedom Park or something like that, because of the amenities here, the pond. So that's certainly, we could have a discussion on what we might want to see as a park, which then might dictate how many parking spots or whatever, anything else might be put in there. Secondly, we could have the discussion on if there's any interest at all to sell any of these lots. I mean, if there's no interest, I mean, we'll, we'll table it, we'll, you know, talk about it maybe down the road sometime, if not. I, like I said, I just keep bringing it up because it, it, there are, there are some sellable lots here, there are some, you know, these are, these are not neighborhood revitalization either, these are, soon as they sell, they go on the tax rolls, and we're going to make, you know, it's going to be good tax dollars for the City of Ottawa. So, that, that's just my feeling, how does, how does the commission feel? What do you, what do you guys want to discuss, if anything at all?
I would agree, I like that, I like your idea of a sidewalk connecting through, because specifically being directly across from Gopert, I believe there's the path from the middle school that kind of comes right to that intersection right there.
Right down here.
I see that being a path where people are walking through, going to that park as well. But yeah, along the lines of Mayor Crowley, I believe these lots would be terrific to start getting houses on. And obviously, the ones that sold within a year or two years already have houses on them. And they're a great spot, I think obviously they would move fast.
And we haven't used them enough above.
There's drainage, there's drainage in there, isn't there Dennis, far number on? Doesn't it come down, is that right?
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah.
You could probably put a boat in there.
But you can, you could also connect, you wouldn't necessarily have to come through any of these lots down there. If we did a walking path around the pond, then you could come off on the west side there and come down that easement. I think there's an electric easement over there, quite honestly, and you could come down that easement to 15th Street. So you don't necessarily have to cut through any of these lots at that point in time.
I'm not sure, whether the commissioners were actually on the commission when this land was acquired, but I was on, on the commission when it was originally acquired, and I know that we had lots of conversations about the fact that we needed more, more parkland. We, and as I've said it once, and I'll say it 100 more times, I've yet to find one developer that has come to me and said, let me build a park in the middle of the city, because there is no return on investment for an individual builder or a company to build a park. However, it is, I believe, my responsibility as a commissioner to make sure that we have green space that is reserved for our citizens, and there is no way, once a house is built, that you can say, your house has got to go so we can make it green space. So I think we have to really work really cautiously before we decide that, yeah, we want to sell all the rest of these lots. I am not in favor of selling all of them, but I'm not in favor of keeping all of them either. I'd like to make a compromise there. I, I wonder, I do have concerns about 14 and 15, just because I think that 14 and 15, when you go out there, it's just, I went out there last week again, and it wasn't quite right. And, and that was just through the naked eye. But, you know, 11, 12, 13, I think those are completely buildable lots. I do start to have heartache when we look at like 10, because if you look at 10, it really is a, is a triangle, and it takes up a tremendous amount of the backspace that would connect people from 15th to the park. And so it gives a really narrow space for individuals to come in. So I, I would be in favor of selling, you know, 11, 12, 13. I don't think we should sell 14 and 15 right now, just because I simply don't think, we don't know, we don't know about it. And I mean, nobody wants to live next to the mayor either, I'm, I didn't want to say it, but I'm just saying it.
I agree. It's obvious, you guys don't want to sell it. No, I'm, I agree absolutely, I was never in favor, there's 10 lots left here, never in favor of selling all 10. Certainly, I, I watched that meeting that you guys had 10, 11 years ago, and that was something that you really pounded in was, you know, we need, we need a park here, we need a park here. Commissioners Jorgensen, as he left last year, that was something he kept, you know, repeating, is that he, he stood by not wanting to sell any of them because he wanted a park here. I've mentioned before, four lots, you know, I, I know you're, you have some heartache with 10, I would be okay with 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 and 15 as a drainage easement, I wouldn't at all be, you know, give that. So I, I'm in, I'm in favor with 10, 11, 12, 13. So I think that leaves us plenty of space for anything that we would like to do with a, with a park, or anything that we may put in here, and leaves plenty of extra green space for any, any visitors there.
So part of this is that we actually, part of the sale of these lots is really, this, this is going into our park plan, correct? The sale of these lots, so I mean, this helps build up our park plan. So when we sell these lots, it doesn't just go into the general fund, it really goes directly into spark, special parks, and I do think that's important.
And it goes into special parks, and those are used besides this park and other parks also.
Absolutely.
When you said OU sold four and five, were those sold to us, or those owned by OU?
They were owned by OU, OU had them given to them, and then OU went ahead and sold them to a local individual.
Okay.
I think I would have to kind of echo what Commissioner Kaler said. I would be absolutely fine with 11, 12, and 13, I don't see any issues with putting some houses there. My concern with 10, I would just be worried that at some point, we wish we had it back for parking or for more of the park or something. I think maybe if we were further in developing the park and knowing what goes where, we could sell it, but since we maybe don't have the exact plan yet, I'd like to keep it, and then we could always sell it further down the road.
Yeah, I would mirror the same thing. I like the idea of the park, like you said, it's a park, it's dissimilar to other ones we have with potential fishing and things like that, that I see people fishing in it all the time already. And so I think it would be a really good need in something like that, and I like the ideas of keeping space to expand it, add parking, some of these other ideas that were on this previous plan. Yeah, like the same idea, those, those lots from, you know, 11, 11, 12, 13, even 10 around, I think would be some really good spots that could bring some money in and get into the parks and hopefully develop that further.
This doesn't belong to a land bank, we don't necessarily need it in a land bank, and I don't wish that upon you, Mayor Crowley, I just want to let you know.
You're still the chair, you made those decisions.
I just want you to know that I do not wish that upon anyone, so.
There's no reason to put it into a land bank.
Yeah, but we have capacity to sell any, any, or really all lots if we wanted to at this time, is that correct?
Yeah, you have that right to do that by just simply making a motion. The reason a land bank was there was because of the spatial conditions that were attached to the coves, and that's how you could deal with those conditions. Now, you could have not done that, you could have just sold the cove straight out, but there were some other benefits to doing it.
We don't have to go over that again, really, just those dramatic stressors, some of us that had to sit through it.
Yeah, and I'm glad you're keeping this, because this can kind of be a inner-city savanna, just think about that. You can have a little path here with benches where people can kind of meditate, kind of have some peaceful releases, and you can have a savanna in here, and maybe do something with some help from the high school classes, biology classes, or the college, to really kind of develop that.
And there is, to the west of here, there's the utility easement, right, and then there is green space still before, because I know there's a creek that runs near the apartment complex.
Some trees over here.
Or, or a little drainage ditch or something. Or is that at the end of this parcel?
It'd be way down if there's any drainage.
There's a creek cleared out.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything up high towards the south by the, by the.
And once you get out of the utilities, the apartments are going to own back.
They own that.
Yeah, they own all of those right here.
And you know, what I always kind of envisioned was, you might have some parking up here for whatever small park you had, but you'd also could put some parking in here to access this part in here.
And the trail.
And the trail.
And through the savanna.
Through the savanna, and the Monarch Station and Florida.
That, that would be cool, I know somebody who's building one of those, and that would be pretty awesome to have there.
Well, beyond popular belief, I, I'm excited to sell some of these lots, I really am. It's, there's, there's a lot of amenities there, I, I always liked seeing people fishing too. You know, I just watched the other day, there were eight people out there, four kids, you know, fishing, and it's, and it's, it's something different that you're not going to find in the City of Ottawa. And you're, and you're, you don't, not everybody has a relative that they can go out to their, you know, their farm and, and fish.
And safer than the river.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, if we choose to move forward, and I know this is the first time we've had this conversation, but if we, well, not the first time, this is the first time in this round of times that we've had this conversation about this. But if we choose to move forward, we don't necessarily need to make decisions about the process in which that we would make those available or anything, that's more of.
I have had a conversation with the city attorney, and he is willing to be your auctioneer again for this when he gets back from the legislature.
Do you know in this, I was reading here about the.
If that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that I'm committed to auction, or we did sealed bid before, or we did, I mean, we've done it, I think, three different ways.
I think we did, I think this one, the auction was the second time around, I think you did ask for sealed bids on these, if I remember right, there's been so many, and it did not come in at, at a good level as to what you thought the lots were worth, and that's why the city attorney held an auction, and we actually got some help in that auctions.
Yeah, it looks like in 2018, we put them on the market for sealed bid, with a floor of $16,000 pro lot. It turns out that we sold some of them for 12, 14, and then the rest were 12, 14, 16, 20, 21, and 22.
Whatever you do, you should not give them away.
No, I'm not giving them away.
Do you know what this would do for like the master park plan that was saying, we need 170 more acres of parkland, was that additional to this kind of presentation when this would be a park, or?
I just want you to remember, like, any plan, they're tied into national statistics. You look at statistics and see what they mean. If, if you, if you called this a park, and you called this, against that national statistic, you would bring it down. But there's a lot of things. But there's a lot of things that go into those statistics. Like, there is a national statistic for how many police officers you ought to have, or per thousand population, and we don't have that. Or per thousand population of firefighters, it's a national statistic. We don't have that, so.
Well, and keep in mind that right at the present time, we probably have as many parks as we can reasonably take care of without adding employees.
Which I think is something we'll need to address at some point. And I've told you that before, Mr. Harp.
You have, you have a good network of parks now.
Oh, yeah.
You have a couple of neighborhood parks that are kind of unique, and you have parks that are within reach of most people, regardless of what you might read. But you have some nice parks, we maintain those parks. When we got started with Kaboom, that kind of helped us start getting money and start getting the enthusiasm to do that, so you have some nice parks in town that address that quality of life issue.
Well, I don't know how the commission feels about, and where the mayor is at about how you'd like to see this, or where you'd like to see this go, but I'm in favor of selling.
I like Commissioner Graves' idea, you know, we could always sell 10 down the road if we need to.
I agree.
I'm perfectly fine with 11, 12, and 13, and I'm perfectly fine with doing it just like we did three years ago with, you know, recruiting our legal counsel to auctioneer for us.
I'm not sure that the live auction is the way that we need to go, and here's the lie. I think that it may prevent individuals who live in our community, who may want to bid, but are unable to do so because work prevents them from doing so. And so if we were to do the sealed bid option, we can always choose not to take any of those bids. I mean, and we can choose to do that in a live auction too. But, and we don't have to, that's why I was asking our city manager, do we have to choose the manner in which that we will move forward with that? I think all of those details can be worked out if we choose to sell lots.
It is, through the commission, how you wish to sell.
Yes.
With exceptions.
So I don't know if, Mayor, you were wanting to hold this over and have a conversation when Commissioner Skidmore is here, or not?
Sure. He's been involved, he was one of the commissioners here when you guys acquired the land. So I think it's, it'd be just, it'd be absolutely responsible of us to involve him in that conversation too. Hopefully, if he gets in the internet, he was concerned about that, he could watch this meeting, kind of see how we feel and how he feels moving forward. And then we could have that, a brief discussion maybe next Monday, you know, just highlights and see where we want to move from there. I think we have a general consensus of 11, 12, and 13, just, you know, if Commissioner Skidmore agrees with it, and in the manner of how we want to sell them all.
Do you want to take a closer look at stormwater?
In the next week?
Yeah.
It's not going to happen next week, it's a long.
So, once again, if somebody buys the lot, and they go to build a house on it, they're going to have to update the stormwater plan for that lot.
If someone buys a platted lot, they have a right to build on the platted lot, they do not have to do stormwater. It's only if they replat lots that they might have. I would say, I would be in favor of that, especially not knowing what might happen with the pond in time, and there being existing houses back behind. Would hate for someone in time to build there, push more water back, something to happen, and negatively impact a house that's been there for 40 years. So I would definitely be down to get more information, at least on that, how that would look.
Here's the thing, I mean, it gets, it's the same thing that goes along with lot 10. If we were to find out information that 14 and 15 are amazing, and there was absolutely no problem, and nobody in this room knew what they were talking about, and that big pipe didn't really actually ever be needed, or was never going to be needed, we could sell those lots. But if we, we can't take it back. If the house is built, we can't take it back. So I'd rather us do our due diligence and find out as much information we can to keep that neighborhood as safe as we can, because rains will come, and water will, water will figure out where it wants to go, not where we want it to go.
I guess we need to gather some information on stormwater.
We can do that, and give a stormwater utility fund. That will help with this, we won't get, I don't imagine we'll do too deep a review on it at this point, but just have a discussion with our engineers about, okay, here's the hypothesis. If we build here, what does that do down here? What should we look for?
I think that's important, to do our due diligence, for sure. Okay? Guess we have some direction.
Next week?
Yeah.
Next week? Bring this back?
Yes.
We'll send.
I feel like we're good on that.
I'll run you off all copies, so you can have your own personal.
Did you go through a dry run? Because.
Do you want Dennis to have a sign of it?
That'll move us on to item six, an automatic aid agreement for vehicle extrication outside the city limits between the city of Ottawa and Franklin County. Oh, Chief Mathias, come on up.
How can I rate with the last discussion we just had? This is something that's been on my radar for quite some time, but it actually came up in a Franklin County Fire Chiefs meeting, that's been probably a year ago. They have been, just like everybody's been busy, volunteerism is down, and when we need people for extrication, it's just been, it's been a little light on manpower. And we're talking with Kristi Hilleker, the Franklin County EMS chief, who've come, worked through some agreement that it's, we would help with extrication out in the county. We're only looking at, on average, I think she averaged the last five years, six to eight calls.
Total?
Extracation, well, per year, yeah, per year. And so typically, those are, those are some pretty severe wrecks, and they need, pretty much everybody didn't get there. And we have the training, our folks go to advanced training, we just got done with an Andy Recker just the other day. And so we feel like we can provide a service, not to take over that service, or not to step on any toes, but get out there and help whoever needs help, and get released back to the city as soon as we can. We do that currently with LOH Fire, we have an automatic aid with them, we go out into their district to help with their fires, we call people back in to help cover the city. And so as soon as they let us go, we try not to commit our trucks out there, or we're going to be there for the entire extent, because, you know, you park in the wrong spot, you're going to be there for hours. So we really try to watch where we park, not to get clogged in into a scene, we'll do the same thing here. But just, I want to draw your attention to, and I had the help of our legal counsel, actually Darby did most of it, but, so we've had the approval of all eight fire departments out in the county. It's Northwest, which is Pomona, Wellsville, LOH, which is right around Ottawa, Cutler, Ohio, Potawatomi, Richmond, and Williamsburg, they all support the program. You know, nighttime is when they have the most volunteers, so during the daytime is when everybody's kind of short on help. And then the initial term is for one year. Once the one year is up, we'll kind of relook at it and say, hey, is this okay or not? Do we, you know, we go from there.
Tim?
Yeah.
Have you, have you sent this over to anyone at the county to take a look at it?
Yeah, so the county looked at it last week, and they, they actually have approved it 4-0 on vote. So they, they think it's a great partnership, so do I. And it does take city resources out of the city limits, but as we all know, we have a lot of people that travel up and down that highway and byways, and so where we can help, I think we should help. Are we liable for anything that happens on scene? It's just like anything, we go out in the county, our insurance covers our equipment, our people, theirs covers their people, their equipment. There's no cost associated with, we pay EMS, or they pay us. We do have a clause that we do and have build shippers when we get semi-trucks involved, we build a shipper for equipment. We just got two pair of extrication gear, bunker gear back, that were ruined in a fire out on the I, and they purchased, gave us money to purchase the gear. So we do have that, and we do try to do that frequently. If we need to, we'll try to get reimbursed by the shipper. But as far as money out to local entities, that's part of, part of the aid agreement, that we just don't do that. What's the difference between automatic aid and just standard mutual aid? Automatic aid is we get notified at the same time as everybody else on the call, sheriff's office, police department, everybody. On mutual aid, let's say Wellsville has a structured fire, we don't have automatic aid with them, so they get there, they find out they need help, then they call us. So there's some, there's some time issues there that, you know, in extrication, time is of the essence, and you need to get them out and get them to the care facility. We do have a clause in there that there could be a time where we do not have the ability to respond to a call, either by manpower, or we're on, we're on calls, we do have a clause in there that, you know, we're not held liable for not responding. Other than that, Darby, pretty standard, standard form, standard agreement.
And just to reiterate, this is a one-year agreement, but there are two automatic renewals in here. And there's a process, if after you do those two automatic renewals, if you want to continue it, or you don't want to continue it. But as you get closer to the year, it doesn't hurt to take another look at it, you shouldn't automatically let it run over without all the parties sitting down saying, is this what we want? Do we need to amend?
So we would just have to have the discussion before the automatic renewal, if we didn't want to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And you should. Now, what you actually hope is that all parties are amenable, because there is, there is, it outlines how you do amend this, and how you make changes, but it'd be nice if people would consider this a living document, and be able to have those discussions as you go along. You shouldn't wait, you shouldn't wait for the full year before you have a discussion with everybody involved, just how's it working, do we need to make some changes?
You know, and so with Chief Hilleker and I, and our assistant chiefs, we sit down on a regular basis and talk over policy procedures that affect both of our departments, and this will be one of them. We just, you know, we will, probably after this first year, once we do have, go out in the county on calls, we'll probably come back and relook at it, at how that went, how can we improve, do all that review, so.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Chief Mathias?
Chief Mathias, I like, I like the idea of this, I like the concept of this, I like the idea of helping other county citizens beyond those that live in the city of Ottawa. However, I mean, this potentially does come at cost to the fire department. I'm wondering if it is possible to track staff costs, and what citizens of Ottawa have outputted to help citizens of the county that are outside the city. That's just possible for us to know. And then I also wonder if it's something that you might not want to report on your monthly report about, when you provided mutual aid, in this particular, with this particular agreement, could be something that could be in your.
Sure, yeah, I mean, currently, yes.
Keep our eyes on it.
Absolutely, yeah. It will cost city taxpayers money, it costs county taxpayers for their crews to come into the city, so it, yes, we can provide all that. We do provide mutual aid on our monthly reports, and we can, we can queue out the extrication, so that has no trouble. Any questions?
Commissioners, since this is the first time seeing this, do you want to hold it over until Skidmore gets here Monday and have another discussion with him?
Sounds good.
Yep.
And even though it's not automatic, we went out in the county Saturday night on a car train, and so we're still going out there, you know, so just because we don't have this approved yet, we still go out and help.
Appreciate that, Chief. Thank you.
Good.
Put this on the comments bar, City Manager.
Commissioners, thank you for taking the unusual action. Although this is a meeting, and you can take any action you want to, and it is just not something you'd normally do, I appreciate you taking those two unusual actions, those helped us out a lot. We're still working through the base grant, I don't imagine much that will happen on it this week, but next week, because we're getting some more information, and actually, not necessarily about our project, but about the Kansas Gas Service project, and I would anticipate that sometime next week, we'll actually be at the table, the Zoom table, the real table, with Kansas Gas Service, so we can talk more about how to handle that, and we'll need some help out of state, lanes working all now. So next Monday also starts your first glimpses at the budget, just to remind you, the department heads will be here, you'll be dealing with a memorandum at this time about what they want you to know about their budgets, where the increases are. And then as we get, when we get assessed valuation in, we'll see how that all fits, bring that back to you, and then you will start seeing it in detail, and you will have to make some decisions on your revenue neutral rate in the June.
First part of July.
Well, yeah, first part of July. So, but the information we give you, we hope that will help you get to that point relatively easy. Don't get frustrated by it. Let us know if you have questions.
Thanks, Matt.
All right? It's because sometimes it can wear a strong person down. All righty? That's all I have.
All right. Comments by City Commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
I have no comment tonight.
Commissioner Kayler?
Not this time.
Commissioner Clay?
Not this time.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. One, we had an interview earlier from Reagan Perry, City Van Board, we have one open seat, one application. How does the commission feel about having a discussion now about Reagan, and maybe moving forward and filling that seat?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Good with the decision, or good with the discussion?
Good with the discussion.
Yes.
All of it, good.
Good director of it.
Thank you. Get that van, come. All right. Then we have a, we have two open seats, one application for the Accessibility Advisory Board, Emily Hamm. Commissioner, do you want to have a discussion about filling that position with Emily? I know you're going to probably stay out of this one, okay?
I will let you deliberate.
All right.
I'm fine with that, I don't necessarily see a need to wait, but, or whatever.
I've had more than one citizen contact me about concerns about this particular individual, and I'm going to say no, this time.
I understand, Commissioner Kayler, your concerns, I understand exactly the conversation that you're talking about, too. I'm torn, because certainly having, you know, two open seats, one application, this is another board that isn't filled that frequently, and has some openings. Cora, do we know how long this term is?
I can pull it up.
I didn't see it on the application.
Look.
Yeah, she put something on there.
Hold on one second, I can grab the phone.
I echo your concerns, Commissioner Kayler. You know, I, we had a, we had a conversation recently about filling our commission seat, and one of the comments that I made is that social media, I don't think, is the place where we air our grievances. Unfortunately, it's, that's the past. I do, outside of that, I do feel like. I, I, I do, outside of that, I do feel like Emily gave a, a great, had some great answers to, you know, to actually being a good advocate for accessibility. So I, I, I mean, I guess if it's, if it, I, I would, I would feel comfortable putting her on the Accessibility Advisory Board right now, so.
And my vote is gonna be yes as well, just because, you know, as you said, you've heard comments. I haven't heard anything, but that doesn't mean they're not out there. But just, you know, very similar going off of the interview. And I, I think she would, she would have some ideas for that board, so I'll vote yes.
For your.
For your term? Thank you. Well, if it's down to us three, I mean, two out of three, the majority, I don't know if, I guess we, we move forward in that respect. So I guess we'll, we'll, we'll point Emily to the advisory board. And then as for the airport, airport board, we have, we will have a discussion, like I said, next week with amongst all of us, including Commissioner Skidmore, about, you know, how we want to fill those two positions. Other than that, I have no other comments, although we are gonna go into executive session. So I move this body recesses into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for the purpose of consulting with the city attorney to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege with Richard Neistat, Mike Hall and Darby Van Houten in attendance. No binding action will take place during executive session. This body will reconvene session at, we'll go 5:55. We'll give three minutes to get everybody out in the same location. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll move to executive session.